A quorum being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. To either of the constables of the town of Rehnham and the county of Bristol greetings. The name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Rehnham Middle Schools Joseph A. Bettencourt Auditorium in said Rehnham on Monday, the 19th, day of May at 7:00 in the evening. Then and there to act on the following articles. And there are thirty-eight. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the six places directed by the vote of the town in said town seven days before the timing of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid. Given under our hands this 15th day of April in the year of our Lord 2014, and the warrant is signed by Joseph R. Pacheco, Marie Smith, and Richard Chavo. A true copy attested pursuant to the written warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Rehnham by posting up attested copies of the same at six places directed by vote of the town seven days before the date of the meeting as within directed and that is signed by, I'm sorry, James Donovan, Constable of Rehnham. Ask everybody to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will begin tonight with a presentation from the Board of Selectmen in the town. Mr. Chavo will handle that.
So it is my pleasure, certainly my privilege, to present the 2014 Albert F. Potter Citizen of the Year Award to Daniel J. Andre. In honor of his outstanding contributions to the town of Rehnham as a citizen and as a member of the planning board, and this award is presented by the Board of Selectmen, myself, Marie, and Joseph Pacheco. I do have a few other quick comments to make at this point. Most of you know that Dan has been chairman of the planning board for the past ten years. He's also been, as far as I know, a member of the planning board for the last twelve years. So this is fairly well-known, but what I don't think is as well-known is all of the very generous work that Dan has done helping others in Rehnham. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples because there are many, but over the years he has very much supported and donated time to the youth sports programs in Rehnham. He helped build two soccer, the two soccer fields at Lord &amp; Colony. He built and donated the new town hall sign and veterans memorial sign. I could go on, but it gives you an idea that this is the type of person who is an example of why Rehnham is such a special place to live. And so it's really my honor, Dan, to present this to you tonight.
Thank you very much. When I got a phone call late last week, Mr. Chavo said, "Dan, have you spoken to Randy?" And that's usually not a good thing. Everybody knows Randy's a pretty quiet guy, so when you get a phone call from Randy, you either did something wrong or he wants something, so. But I really do appreciate it. It's nice to be recognized for all that you do in Rehnham. And it's a very easy town to volunteer and donate because we've been here a very long time and we really appreciate for what the town has given us. You don't receive an award like this alone. There's so many people that do a lot of volunteer work. The Veterans Memorial, Chris Gallagher and the veterans had a big, a huge fundraising for that. Sandy Leahy for the flags. You know, that's quite a chore in the fire department and highway department has helped out getting all those flags up and down. So we've done an awful lot, but again, it's not just, it's just not just myself. There's a whole, a whole list of people behind me. And I'd like to thank my family because anybody that knows you's put a lot of time into volunteering and if your family's not behind you, then it's, it's not worth anything. So, thank you.
And so, Dan, while you're thanking your family, how about asking Laurie to stand up and take an applause, your wife?
Thank you Chairman Chavo and thank you, Dan, for all your, I hate to say years and years of volunteerism to the town, but you do. Before we get going, we've got a reserve section down here. I'm sure people are familiar with town meeting process. These are folks that, many of them are town officials. We've got some press, but they all share one common bond and that is that they are from out of town, I think most. Yeah. In order to speak at town meeting, we need, I would ask the body of town meeting to allow them with the ability to speak should we need their input at town meeting tonight, and I would ask that with unanimous consent. Any objection? Thank you for that. While we're on the topic of appreciating people, we are losing one of our town department heads shortly this summertime, and he has asked to just have a couple of minutes at the microphone to, I'm sure, to thank the town for their support over the years. Right, Rogers? This is Roger Stolti, our highway superintendent.
Thank you very much. It's important to me tonight to come here and after these seventeen years and tell the Board of Selectmen, this board and the ones before them, thank you for renewing my contract. And also to the good people of Rehnham for allowing me to be your superintendent for these seventeen years. It was a challenging job, but it had a lot of rewards. So I really thank you for that, that opportunity. It all wasn't about work, I mean, opportunity. We got some things done. I think some of you remember, you know, driving your car to the top of the landfill. One image that sticks in my mind is this pretty Cadillac or Lincoln was going, making its way up through the muddy landfill and got to the top and out popped a young lady who was going to tennis or coming from it in her totally white suit and her white socks and her white tennis shoes. She popped around their car like the mud was hot to get the trash out and out she went. I'm sure that those sneakers were, ended up in the trash soon. But the thing about it is that we made some changes there and I'm glad we were able to make them. The first thing we did was we privatized the landfill so we could have some, some funding to, number one, do a gas collection system in it, which was a million and a half, and because the state allowed us to privatize it, they made us do the deluxe version of it, of course. But we were able to do that without any tax benefit to the, to the, to the town. We also built a transfer station. And all part of that formula was also a contract that we settled with Waste Management that produces someone in a neighborhood of $250,000 a year, eighty-some with taxes, and the other is with revenue from the, from the waste that moves through. Once landfill closes in Taunton, you're going to be the only game in town, so you're going to make some money with that in the future. The maintenance of public ways, we had a lot of nuts to crack, two major ones, 104 and the industrial park. In both situations, they, they both needed funding and in, I think, 104 was hanging around for about eight years before it needed a lot of attention. I gave it the attention. Gordon Luciano went after the money. And amazed me when he went up to, he and I drove up to Boston to ask them for three and a half million dollars. I said, "This isn't going to work." So I'm suggesting to him that, "What happens if we manage the thing for him? Maybe that will entice him to do it. Be careful what you ask for. I got it." Gordon got the money and we got a project and it's finished. The industrial park was a grant, a financial grant that we talked about for six months. Joe Pacheco went after the funds here and at, in the middle of May, they finally decided to give it to us, but of course, there's a hurdle jump because we have to have it all done, constructed, and spent and ask for reimbursement before the end of June. Otherwise, we weren't going to get it. So those are the kind of things that we had, the hurdles that we had to drive, but it was worth it when we got through to the end. The other part of the maintenance of public ways that was important is the grounds that we've, we inherited, eighty-eight acres of grass. And it was with your generosity that you gave us the equipment to be able to meet that, that requirement. And we thank you very much for that. And from what I hear, our fields are some of the most desired fields for, for the sports in the area. And it all goes to the, to the credit of the employees of the highway department who make that happen. So I thank you for, for your, your support on that. The last thing that I mentioned is snow and ice. I have to admit that that's one part of it, this job, that I'm not going to miss. The last few years, it was kind of hard on me. And I don't know if it was my age or what the heck was going on, but it was, it was kind of tough. But I did, one thing I did as a superintendent, I plowed right along with the rest of them. So this is probably my only opportunity I'm ever going to have. If I've ever offended you or your mailbox with my plow, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for this opportunity and I'm sure, only the best for Rehnham.
Thank you, Mr. Stolti. I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize one more person here tonight. His last town meeting is a town official. I've had the pleasure over the last, I don't know, gosh, thirteen, fourteen years to work alongside this gentleman when I was on the Capitol Planning Committee and again as a selectman. And now I have had the distinct honor to the last three annual town meetings to get a warrant in my hands that made it extremely easy on me, and that's one, Dwayne Wheeler. Dwayne came to the town early 2000s, Dwayne? As, as, 2000 and?
2000, I think it was.
2000, as a retired CFO of a large corporation, and we were lucky to get him then. And I think he said at the time he'd only be around for, in that capacity for a few years, but we just didn't let him go. And this is his, I believe, his last town meeting. Sadly, he says, "Dwayne is, is somebody who's faced off against you in a number of different capacities, but especially as one who has to work our way through this warrant tonight. I thank you for all of your years of dedication and service to the town of Rehnham." So my name is John Donahue. I'm your town moderator. I'm joined up front here. Working from your left to right is Joe Pacheco. This is our Board of Selectmen, Joe Pacheco, Marie Smith, Chairman Richard Chavo. Continuing on, our new town council. Seems kind of strange to sit up here not being next to Mark Antin with his comments in my ear, but we'll see if Fraternality Pete Nick does the same. Town clerk, Marcia Sylvia, of course, Dwayne, Gilaliji. Richard Bentley, Karen Robertson, and then the end there, Jim Ross. This is our finance committee, our towns financial team. We're also joined tonight by our state representative representing Rehnham in the eighth Plymouth District, Angelo D'Amelia. Angelo, thank you for coming tonight. And as I mentioned, a whole host of department heads and town officials down here in the well, if you will, of the, of the town meeting. They'll be called upon from time to time tonight to answer any questions. And I know our members of our school committee and school district are here as well. Dr. Forbes, I see you over there. Just a couple of ground rules because we are twenty-five minutes in already. All I would ask is that when you have comments, you please come to the, to the, either one of the two microphones, state your name and address for the town clerk as she keeps the minutes. If you can't make it to the microphone by the time, and I do tend to move quickly, folks, so if you don't think you're going to get to the microphone in time, just yell out. I will, I will stop. Again, we ask that comments at the microphone are directed through the moderator, through the chair, and they're kept focused on the article at hand. One of the nice things about Rehnham town meetings, it's always been a civil environment and I don't ever expect it to change, but I do like to remind people that this is a legislative body and we need to make sure that we treat it as such. In the event of a roll call vote, I will come off the stage. I've got my handy clicker. All I would ask is that you, if possible, find a seat so I don't have to worry about people moving, if that's the case, with the exception, of course, of the detail officer who we prefer to keep at the door. And last but not least, if you've got a cell phone, silent or vibrate would be appreciated. We're going to use the consent agenda because we do have close to forty articles, so Articles 1 to 4, 5, 6, and 7 will be taken in tandem. I will read them all, give you a brief description of what they are, and we'll come back around. And as long as there's no questions, we will, we will motion to approve them as a slate. As I read through Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7, if you have a question, just yell "hold" and we'll circle back around to it. So without further ado, any further questions, we will get right into it. So again, we'll start with this slate on the consent agenda. Article 1, we will choose by nomination all minor town officers, fence viewers and field drivers, survey of lumber, and measure of wood. Article 2, we will vote to see if the town will vote to accept the report of the town officers. Again, if anybody's any questions on these, just yell "hold." Article 3, we'll come back around to, it'll stand on its own. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer the sum of $400 for quarters for the American Legion Post 405. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue for the financial year beginning July 1, 2014. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign contracts on behalf of the town of Rehnham upon such terms and conditions as they deem appropriate for any matter that, which requires a signed contract. And Article 7, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and enter into contracts for the expenditure of any funds allotted or to be allotted by the Commonwealth and/or county for the construction, reconstruction, and improvements of the town infrastructure. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement of funds or taking action relative thereto. So the slate, ladies and gentlemen, is Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. These are deemed, for lack of a better word, or lack of a legal word, housekeeping articles and run every annual town meeting. As a rule, they do not generate discussion. So what we do is we take them all into one and we save a few minutes.
A motion to accept, the group.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 as a consent agenda. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 pass unanimously. Back to Article 3, which is the budget. In the back of your, before I put it on the floor, in the back of your book, ladies and gentlemen, you'll see with the, at the top of the left-hand page, about three-quarters of the way back, Town of Rehnham General Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015. This is the entire budget of the Town of Rehnham for fiscal year 15, beginning July 1, 2014. I will read through each line item, the total of each line item. So in other words, if you look at line 122, there are two line items for selectmen, but I will read just the selectmen, the aggregate number for the department that's mentioned. I will pause briefly as, after I read each one. If anybody has a question, comment, or concern, please just yell "hold." We'll make a note and we'll come back to it. We'll finish the budget and then we will circle back and we'll listen to any discussion, questions, concerns, or even possible amendments to any of the line items. And I believe we will have at least one amendment tonight. And we will go back and we will vote amendments, and then we will vote the entire budget in total. So without further ado, I'm sorry, I did promise Mr., I'm already, I'm already pushing you aside, aren't I? I did promise Mr. Wheeler a few minutes to talk about the budget. My apologies.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to repeat the comments I made a week ago. You will notice in these line items that in every case, the amount requested has equaled the finance committee's recommendation. Ladies and gentlemen, this doesn't happen by chance. It's due to the excellent administrators and department heads that we in Rehnham are lucky to have. When we on the finance committee put the instructions out in, in late December, I should say not instructions, but requests, please, keep your budgets within 2% of expenses plus the negotiated wage increases. Once again, our department heads and administrators have complied with this request. We on the finance committee thank them because it's a pleasure to work with people who are easy to work with. We thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Here we go. Moderator, $1,000. Finance committee, $6,160. Reserve fund, $75,000. Town accountant, $77,627. Audit, $15,000. Town treasurer-collector expenses, $226,526. Capital planning expenses, $5,000. Town council expense, $56,000. Data processing MIS, $89,740. Tax title, $25,000. Town clerk, $134,604. Primaries and elections, $29,775. Census and street listings, $4,007. Conservation, conservation commission, $50,856. Town planner, $79,524. Planning board, $52,126. Zoning appeals, $8,900. Economic business development, $2,000. SERPED, $2,162. Public buildings and property maintenance, $118,466. Property insurance, $88,000. Town reports, $4,386.
Mr. Moderator, I request that you put a hold on item 210.
Nope, don't get ahead of me. Police department, $4,143,068. We're going to have a hold on 210, we'll come back to 210. Building department, $117,231. Plumbing and gas, $27,837. Weights and measures, $13,060. Electrical, $26,543. Animal inspection, $4,052. Emergency management, $6,810. Animal control officer, $29,802. For Juana Rehnham Regional School District, $15,519,138. Bristol Plymouth Vocational, $1,476,322. Bristol County Agricultural High School, $20,604. Engineering expense, $7,000. Highway parks and grounds, $1,153,845. Snow and ice, $50,000. Street lighting, $32,500. Solid waste disposal, $334,279. Water distribution hydrant rental, $10,000. Board of health, $111,677. Council on Aging, $92,972. Veteran services, $139,980. Library, $332,400. Historical commission, $1,000. Memorial on Armistice Day, $1,100. Retirement of debt, $1,494,458. Interest on long-term debt, $554,386. Interest on short-term debt, $7,000. State assessments and charges, $148,706. County assessments and charges, $195,283. Retirement and pension contributions, $1,465,300. Workers' compensation, $170,000. Unemployment compensation, $20,000. Health insurance, $1,663,000. Life insurance, $2,750. Medicare, $117,000. Southeastern Regional, $4,100. Liability insurance, $53,200. For a grand total of $33,823,947. I need that put on the floor by motion. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the budget. Discussion on the budget. So now we will come back to line item 210. Chief Donovan, all right? Button on the top, chief.
Hello, we're working. The police department requests to amend line 210 from 4143068 to 4236488 due to settlement of a contract with the Rehnham Police Patrolmen's Union.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend line item 210 of the annual budget from $4,143,068 to $4,236,488. Discussion on the motion to amend line item 210. Seeing none, all in favor of amending line item 210, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Line item 210 is amended to 4236488. I believe that was the only line item held, if I'm not mistaken. We are going to need to amend the bottom line, total bottom line.
John, I amend the bottom.
In the form?
To recognize the increase in the waste department we just did at 93 times. To recognize the increase in the waste department we just did at 93,020 for a new total approved budget, $33,917,367.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend the total budget from $33,823,947 to $33,917,367. Discussion on the motion to amend the total budget. Seeing none, all in favor of amending the total budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, so we have an amended budget, folks. Any other line items up for discussion? Anybody last-minute questions? Seeing none, I will need a motion to approve the budget as amended, if possible.
Yep, motion to approve the budget as amended.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the budget as amended. Discussion on the budget as amended. Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Budget is approved unanimously. Where else can you go and spend $34 million in about 12 minutes, right? Thank you, folks, for your patience on that. That's always the longest part of the night. I probably just jinxed us, though. So we are up to Article 8. See if the town will vote to authorize an offset receipts account under Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E, to fund the operation of the before and after-school daycare and kindergarten wraparound program run by the Park and Recreation Department, and to authorize expenditures of $202,000 during fiscal year 15 as follows, and they are listed. And the offsets receipts account is to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 15 from the folks that use those services.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 8. Discussion on Article 8. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 8 passes unanimously. Folks, I don't necessarily have to read every article verbatim. The fact that we mail this to you is what's considered fair warning. I will, you'll see on some of the longer articles, for the interest of time, I will take a few shortcuts. If that bothers anybody and they have a question, just get my attention up here. Not like we have a Bruins game to go to tonight, right? Article 9, to see if the town will vote to reauthorize a revolving fund pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the purpose of receiving and expending funds as a result of reimbursable incidents allowed under Mass General Laws, Chapter 21E, involving hazardous materials releases. Receipts generated shall be deposited into this revolving fund and expenditures not to exceed $100,000 may be expended by the fire chief without further appropriation or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 9. Discussion on Article 9. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 9 passes unanimously. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to reauthorize the fire alarm revolving fund under Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the purpose of receiving and expending funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 14, and to transfer to this account the balance as of June 30, 14, from the existing revolving account. Receipts generated from fire alarm permits, inspections, and details shall be deposited into this revolving fund and expenditures including but not limited to vehicle maintenance, detail pay, overtime coverage for replacement of fire inspector, any, all equipment related to radio-controlled boxes not to exceed $60,000 may be expended by the fire chief without further appropriation or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 10. Discussion on Article 10. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 10 passes unanimously. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to authorize a revolving fund under Mass General Laws, 44, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, that may be spent by the Council on Aging and to be known as the Council on Aging Activities Revolving Fund. Council on Aging Activities Revolving Fund is to be credited with all fees and charges received in association with programs and activities of which a user fee is charged. The amount of this revolving fund is to be limited to $15,000 per fiscal year or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 11. Discussion on Article 11. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 11 passes unanimously. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to reauthorize a revolving fund pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the purpose of receiving and expending funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 14, for the operation and maintenance of the South School. Receipts generated shall be deposited into this revolving fund and expenditures not to exceed $25,000 may be expended by the Board of Selectmen without further appropriation, not to exceed $25,000, may be expended by the Board of Selectmen without further appropriation. I skipped a line there, didn't I? Or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Well, motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 12. Discussion on Article 12. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 12 passes unanimously. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund according to Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half, for the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School District to take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 13. By statute, this article does require a two-thirds vote. Discussion on Article 13. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 14, see if the town will vote to transfer $258,309 as detailed below from the ambulance receipts account to operate the ambulance service for the first half of fiscal year 2015. Any money is not used to be returned to the ambulance receipts account or take any action relative thereto, and the amounts are listed.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 14. Discussion on Article 14. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 14 passes unanimously. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $2,480,125 as categorized below to operate the sewer enterprise. The Finance Committee recommends that the following sums be appropriated to operate the sewer enterprise. I will not read the individual line items, but down below you'll see it says, "And that $1,605,000 be raised from sewer enterprise revenues, $292,399 from sewer retained earnings, and $582,701.25 from sewer retained earnings for sewer construction debt, or take any action relative thereto."
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 15. Discussion on Article 15. I want to pause for a second, let folks just check out the second half of that article as well. There are some more numbers there and further explanation. Seeing no questions or comments on Article 15, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 15 passes unanimously. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 to carry out fiscal 2016 state-mandated recertification of all real and personal property valuations and maintenance services for fiscal year 2016 or take any action relative thereto. This will be year one of a three-year contract.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 16. Discussion on Article 16. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 16 passes unanimously. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for payment of a full measure and list on the balance of all the commercial and industrial properties, take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 17. Discussion on Article 17. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 17 passes unanimously. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,335,132 for the purpose of paying the debt service on the outstanding bonds and notes for the Rainham Middle School, the renovation projects for La Liberty Elementary School, and the Merrill School, and for the new regional high school, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm gonna need a motion to get it on the floor.
Make a motion, Inspector.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 18. Discussion on the article, Ms. Riley.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 18 by striking the amount of $1,335,132 and inserting $1,343,123.
Can I get a second?
Yep, second to that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend Article 18, striking the amount 1335132 and inserting 1343123. Ms. Riley, any comments?
Yeah, just under discussion, Mr. Moderator. This is in keeping with the previously approved debt exclusion votes, and it's just some updated figures which now include the interest on the bonds that are involved.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments on the motion to amend Article 18? Seeing none, all in favor of amending Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 18 is amended.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 18 as amended. Discussion on the motion to approve Article 18 as amended. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 18 passes unanimously. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of providing professional services, land acquisition, materials, and construction contract obligations, in order to make improvements to town infrastructure, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 19. Discussion on Article 19. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 19 passes unanimously. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,731 for an employee health insurance mitigation fund, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 20. Discussion on Article 20. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 20 passes unanimously. I'm not gonna make the same mistake twice. The other night I had a bad copy of the law. You're not gonna get me again, Mr. Buckner. This is where I went off the rails. Alright, we're good. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the sewer betterment fund, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 21. Discussion on Article 21. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 21 passes unanimously. Article 22, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to the general stabilization account, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 22. Discussion on Article 22. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 22 passes unanimously. We're losing our energy here, folks. It's palpable up here. Randy, you gotta get some, this Board of Selectmen, we've gotta get some more controversial articles on this warrant. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the, nothing gets the voters energized like cemetery sales. See if the town will vote to transfer from the cemetery sales of lots account the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of funding road and infrastructure expansion at the Pleasant Street Cemetery, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 23. Discussion on Article 23. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Better. Opposed, no. Article 23 passes unanimously. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to transfer from bond premiums account the sum of $15,315 for payment of fiscal year 14 debt services, debt service as described below, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 24. Discussion on Article 24. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 24 passes unanimously. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation account number 220-650, Board and Colony, the amount of $24,100 to the general fund to offset the associated Board and Colony expenditures of the general operating budget, any unused funds at the end of FY '15 to be returned to the Board and Colony receipts reserved for appropriation account, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 25. Discussion on Article 25. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 25, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 25 passes unanimously. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to authorize the engineering and construction services of interceptor and lateral sewers in the south Rainham area of town, including the River Street and Suzanne Drive neighborhoods, as requested by citizens petition to appropriate the sum of $2,500,000 for said purpose. To authorize the treasurer with approval of the selectmen to raise and appropriate said amount by borrowing for a term of up to 30 years pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and authorize the Board of Sewer Commissioners to apply for, accept, and expend any state or federal aid that is or may become available for these purposes, and assess betterments for 25% of the project cost pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 83, Section 23, provided that no debt shall be issued hereunder unless and until the town shall have voted to exempt the debt service of any bonds or notes issued hereunder from the limitations of Proposition 2 and a half so-called, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 26. Folks, I just concurred with Town Council, and we both agree that Article 26 requires a two-thirds majority vote. Any discussion on Article 26? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 26 passes unanimously. So it's the sewers that get you guys. Alright, I got it. Catching on. More sewers. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to deed for the sum of $1 to Georgie and Joan W. Pacheco, a certain parcel of land on Dean Street, said parcel shown as parcel one, and containing 3,647 plus or minus square feet on a plan dated March 30, 2012, drafted by Reed Land Surveying. The title is follows, "Plan of Property Taken to Be Acquired for Proposed Dean Street Pump Station." Said plan is recorded with the Bristol County North Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 486, page 55, or take any action relative thereto. There is a note that this parcel was previously taken from the Pachicos by the town through an order of taking. The proposed pump station has been relocated, and this panel is, parcel is no longer needed.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 27. Discussion on Article 27. And this will require a two-thirds vote as well, since the town is taking, or selling property in this case. Discussion on Article 27. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 27 passes unanimously. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 2/12 of the town's general bylaws entitled "Rubbish and Refuse," by replacing the current language with the following, or take any action relative thereto. And I will not bore the town reading by reading the amendments to the bylaw, suffice to say that we are, the town is proposing to put a little bit of teeth in the illegal dumping bylaw. So I'll give folks a second to, this was discussed at the pre-town meeting last week, but I will give folks a second to review in case they have questions. Can I get it onto the floor?
Motion to accept it.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article 28. Discussion on Article 28. Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-eight. Discussion on Article twenty-eight. Seeing none. All in favor of Article twenty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article twenty-eight passes unanimously. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Rainham general bylaws, Section two slash seventeen, wetlands protection bylaw, specifically Section four, third paragraph, by deleting the following strike-through language and adding the bolded language or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article twenty-nine. Discussion on Article twenty-nine. And Article twenty-nine has to do with filing fees, folks. Seeing none. All in favor of Article twenty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article twenty-nine passes unanimously. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Rainham general bylaws, Section two slash seventeen, wetlands protection bylaw, specifically Section seven C, by deleting the following strike-through language and adding the bolded language or take any action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty. And we are continuing to discuss fees here, folks. Questions or comments on Article thirty? Seeing none. All in favor of Article thirty, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty passes unanimously. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Rainham zoning bylaws, Article six point three as follows, or take any action relative thereto. Accessory buildings and uses, further clarifying the appropriate uses of storage containers, sheds, things of that, in that matter, temporary storage units, things along those lines, portable storage containers.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-one. Discussion on Article thirty-one should start with a report of the planning board.
Good evening. At a public hearing on April seventeenth, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action.
Questions on Article thirty-one? Comments? We're starting to get into the zoning items here, folks, so all zoning articles do require a two-thirds majority vote. So if I don't, I don't see anybody up for Article thirty-one, so all in favor of Article thirty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-one passes unanimously. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to amend Article ten of the Town of Rainham zoning bylaws by adding the following definitions or take any action relative thereto. And Article thirty-two deals with beehives.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-two. We will start with a report of the planning board.
At a public hearing on April seventeenth, the planning board unanimously voted favorable action on Article thirty-two.
Thank you, sir. Further comments on Article thirty-two?
My name's Mike Kramer. I live at one-seventeen Whippleville. My concern is the safety for children in the neighborhood. Ten feet distance from a property line is not very far. My neighbor here has a child who's allergic to bees, and ten feet's not gonna be adequate. And looking at it twenty feet from a school and knowing the number of children that are allergic to bees, again, your concern, my concern is safety. I've been teaching over twenty years at a school, and we have a large number of kids allergic to bees. So I'd like to increase the distance a hundred feet residential and two hundred feet from schools.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend it.
So setback instead of ten feet, setback to one hundred feet?
And two hundred feet.
And then where it says twenty from sidewalks, roadway, schools, daycare facilities, you wanna make to twenty, two hundred. Do I have that right?
Yes, again, thinking of the safety issue.
Do I have a second for that motion to amend? Motion has been made and seconded to amend Article thirty-two, adjusting the setback from ten feet to one hundred feet from all property lines and buildings and two hundred feet from twenty feet from all sidewalks, roadway, schools, daycare facilities, parks and playgrounds. Discussion on that motion to amend. Sir?
Hi, John Grace, one-five-six-hundred Street. I'm a beekeeper in town. The concern I have with his motion is bees will leave their hive about five feet and go straight up, and then will travel five miles to forage for nectar, pollen. So any kind of setback will not work. All surrounding town bees will come in. Farms bring in two hundred, three hundred hives in Rainham to pollinate their flowers. So any kind of setback will not work. I understand his concerns, but they will not work.
As a resident who had beehives two feet from his property all last summer and seen hundreds of them surround my kids, I'd like to see some kind of safety at least attempted here. Ten feet is good for a shed, not for something that is moving and surrounding my children.
I appreciate that, and if you look down below, it says state best management practices. I believe you're referring to a poor beekeeper and not to the bees. I worked with the town to ensure that their new regulations here would work and would be safe for everyone.
Sir, behind, if you'd comment?
My name's Andy Durica. I live on one-thirty-five Whippleville Drive. I have a six-year-old son who has a honeybee allergy. I also have a swimming pool, and I also live on the other side of the beekeeper in question last summer. And there were bees all over our pool all summer long, and my children were not comfortable using our own backyard. So I think what Mike has proposed is valid.
The concern here is you're gonna get bees from all over the area within five miles of your house, potentially coming to your house. So the best thing to do is to regulate the beekeeper, not the bees. And in your case, the beekeeper was not a good beekeeper and has since then stopped beekeeping, from my understanding.
But couldn't a bad beekeeper, I guess, still be ten feet away from my property line?
Absolutely, but if he follows the best management practices as the town is requesting, and they use nuisance laws, and they should stop it. The concern, no one really knows that all the farms in town will bring in two, three hundred hives from June fifteenth to August fifteenth or so, and that increased the number of bees in town, all the wild bees in town and all that's surrounding towns that have beekeepers and bees. You can't stop the bees, you gotta, you gotta kinda regulate the beekeeper. I mean, I have two daughters that are four and five and a half that play within fifteen feet of my hives. They've never been stung, 'cause I'm sure that they're safe.
My, my six-year-old son went to the emergency room last summer with a honeybee sting.
I appreciate that, and if I was that beekeeper, I would take the hives out of my yard to protect the children.
There's no way I can even prove that it was his honeybee, which is...
Absolutely.
Frustrating, so.
And if I was, if I was your neighbor, I'd take the hives out of my yard to protect your son.
We're hoping a hundred feet does protect us.
Once again, they'll come out five feet, they'll go straight up in the air, and they'll go five miles to have to feed. So you, I mean, a hundred feet won't do it. Three miles won't do it. Unless we, unless we keep, give away all the bees in the five-mile range of your house, that's when we're gonna do it.
But there's a lot of activity right around the hive. We witnessed that last year. I understand what you're saying. They go up and travel, but when they're close to the hive, they're all over the place and coming into our pools.
Number one issue is the water source. I have a pool, he has a pool, and the children play at the pool. That's the number one concern.
Yeah, they're attracted to chlorine is the problem. They like the chlorine. So that's why your town entered in their water source on the beehive?
I'm the water source right now, and my children are around that water source all summer. This is a concern. A hundred feet does not seem like a lot, and you're talking five miles. We're asking a hundred feet. That's all. So that's a big difference.
I just think you're punishing the beekeepers that are doing a good job to ensure they're safe over one case. This is one case, and you're trying to punish all the beekeepers in the town.
Mr. Chabeno, on behalf of the planning board, or?
Yeah, I would just like to make people aware that this is something that myself and the Board of Health Director were asked to research last fall. We've been working on this for probably the last eight months. We've done extensive research, and I'd ask people to keep in mind that beekeeping is considered an agricultural use by state law, so they look very closely at how it's regulated.
Thank you, sir. So the motion on the floor is to amend Article thirty-two. We're not actually voting on Article thirty-two, just the motion to amend. So again, we're, the motion on the floor to amend is to increase the setback from ten to one hundred and the distance from sidewalks, roadway, schools, daycare facilities, parks and playgrounds from twenty to two hundred. So on the motion to amend, any further discussion? Again, we are not voting to approve or disapprove of Article thirty-two, just the motion to amend those two distances. Any further question on that? Seeing none. All in favor of amending Article thirty-two, please say aye. Opposed, no?
No.
The motion to amend Article thirty-two, which only needs to be a majority, fails. So the only motion on the floor right now is to approve Article thirty-two as printed. Discussion on Article thirty-two as printed.
Motion to accept Article thirty-two as printed.
Seeing none. All those in favor of approving Article thirty-two, please say aye. Opposed, no. Article thirty-two is approved unanimously. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Rainham zoning bylaws, Section three point one, types of districts by adding the following or take any action relative thereto. And this is the registered marijuana dispensary overlay district. Mr. Chabeno?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we accept the article.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-three. We'll begin with a report of the planning board.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Planning board at the public hearing actually proposes an amendment to Article thirty-three.
Want to propose the amendment first and then report on the, then do a report of the planning board?
Yes, please.
As you wish.
At the public hearing held on April seventeenth, the planning board received some public feedback which actually urged the planning board to reconsider the proposed district and reduce it slightly. And the modified version is, was available for the public on handouts as they walked in. Also, I believe the town clerk, town moderator, and town council have copies of that. And town council has also reviewed the revised boundary description and has found it legally acceptable. And therefore, the planning board voted unanimously at the public hearing on April seventeenth to recommend favorable action to the amended boundary description for Article thirty-three.
Thank you. So I'm gonna need a motion to actually amend Article thirty-three. He can't write.
Motion to amend.
Someone's gonna have to read it.
Okay, resulting from public comment received at the public hearing held on April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, the planning board unanimous, voted unanimously to recommend the following amendment to Article thirty-three at the, of the annual town meeting. And to further amend Section three-two zoning map by adding the registered marijuana dispensary overlay district as described below, beginning at the northeast corner of the intersection of New State Highway, Route forty-four at Church Street, thence easterly along the southern boundaries of lots forty-four and forty-five A of Assessors Map sixteen as shown on the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen Assessors Map to a point at the southeast corner of Lot forty-five A, thence northwesterly, you following me, along the eastern boundary of Lot forty-five A where it intersects with the southern boundary of Lot forty-three dash two, as shown on the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen Assessors Map. Thence northeasterly to the southeast corner of Lot forty-three two, thence northwesterly along the eastern boundaries of lots forty-three two and forty-one three of Assessors Map sixteen as shown on the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen Assessors Map. That is the changes, Mr. Moderator.
I enjoyed that. Can I get a second? So motion has been made and seconded to amend Article thirty-three. Perhaps in layman's terms, we could get what that means, maybe some actual locations so people have...
Initially, the proposed boundary roughly ran from Church Street easterly to the town line with a five-hundred-foot buffer to the north and south of Route forty-four. However, at the, at the public hearing, it was brought to the board's attention that this would include a handful of residential properties. Therefore, we simply reduced what would be the northwest corner. We eliminated the northwest corner, a handful of residential properties from the district.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor to amend Article thirty-three. Discussion on the motion to amend Article thirty-three, and essentially you just heard what it achieved, what this amendment would achieve if approved tonight. Discussion on the motion to amend Article thirty-three. Seeing none. All in favor of amending Article thirty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-three is amended.
Motion to approve the article as amended.
Motion has been made to approve Article thirty-three as amended. Discussion on Article thirty-three in general. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article, I'm sorry, this will take a two-thirds vote, as it is a zoning bylaw change. All those in favor of Article thirty-three as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-three is approved as amended. Okay, so, note to self, marijuana does not get people out of their seats either, okay? Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote under General Laws, Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-three to accept the alteration by the Board of Selectmen of the existing layout of Center Street, a public way in the Town of Rainham, as shown on a plan entitled Rainham, two thousand and fourteen Alteration Details in the body of the article.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-four. Discussion on Article thirty-four. Okay. I'm not gonna argue with the town council. You're new, um, you know. Discussion on Article thirty-four. Been told this will need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-four passes unanimously. I'm assuming thirty-five and thirty-six as well. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote under General Laws, Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-three to accept the alteration by the Board of Selectmen of the existing layout of Center Street, a public way in the Town of Rainham, as shown on a plan entitled Rainham, two thousand and fourteen Alteration. Description follows in the article.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-five. Discussion on Article thirty-five. Again, two-thirds vote will be necessary. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor of Article thirty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-five passes unanimously. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote under General Laws, Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-three to accept a temporary alteration by the Board of Selectmen of the existing layout of Center Street, a public way in the Town of Rainham, as showed on a plan entitled Rainham, two thousand and fourteen Alteration. Description of such follows in the article.
Motion to accept the article.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-six. Discussion on Article thirty-six. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article thirty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-six passes unanimously. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to accept as a townway the roadway known as Carriage Hill Drive, starting at Station fourteen plus zero-zero and ending at Station thirty plus seventy-five at the intersection of Dunham Drive, as shown on a plan entitled Carriage Hill Estates, Phase two. Description follows in the article.
Motion to accept the article.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-seven. Discussion on Article thirty-seven. Seeing none. All in favor of Article thirty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Article thirty-seven passes unanimously. And finally, Article thirty-eight. To see if the town will vote to accept as a townway... To see if the town will vote to accept as a townway the roadways and associated easements known as Princess Lane, Baron's Way, and Queen's Circle, as shown on plans entitled Street Acceptance Plan. And the description follows in the article.
Motion to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Article thirty-eight. Discussion on Article thirty-eight. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article thirty-eight passes unanimously. Motion to dissolve?
Motion to dissolve.
Motion has been made and seconded to dissolve the annual town meeting. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are dissolved. Thank you very much, folks.